Okay, and I got another question. When are they going to put the bid out for the police cars? Take.
We'll get the answer to you. Thank you. Would anyone else in the public wish to speak? Would anyone else in the public wish to speak? Hearing, seeing none, public session is closed. Public official session, we're going to hear from Mayor Cassetti, please. And then following Mayor Cassetti, we're going to try to get Mr. Acquavalo on the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, President Pecaro, members of the Board of Alderman and residents of the great city of Ansonia. Let me begin by wishing everyone a happy new year. I am excited about the upcoming year we'll bring, and I look forward to continuing to recharge Ansonia with you. Of course, with the new year brings new beginnings for us all. I want to tell you that last week, my staff and I received a visit from Police Chief Kevin Hale, and we were not expecting the news that we received. Police Chief Kevin Hale has submitted his letter of retirement slated for February 16th of this year. I can't tell you what a tremendous asset the chief has been to this administration and to the residents of the city of Ansonia. Under his sound leadership, we have all been safer and have had a peace of mind that our police department is operating at top capacity. He has been a true leader and a dedicated public servant. I have known Kevin Hale since grammar school. We both went to Lincoln School together. I think that was the only time the roles were reversed. I must have protected him out in the playground a few times. But don't worry, chief, you have made up this more than that. Our paths crossed in 2002, when I served as a police commissioner, and now I had the privilege of working with him as mayor. Chief, I can't thank you enough for your friendship and guidance over these last five years, and for the job you have done for Ansonia. You will be missed. We wish you the best of luck in whatever your future holds for you. Let's have a round of applause for Chief Hale. I want everyone to be assured that we will now be in the capable hands of Lieutenant Cota, Andy Cota. The police commission voted to appoint Lieutenant Cota as acting police chief in the interim. A round of applause for he on. We just received notice that we received a grant for $40,000 from the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection from their recreational trails program. The study will be formed, will be from the intersection of Persian Drive and Clifton Avenue to the municipal border with Seymour. I am proud to say that we were of 73 applicants, and they awarded it to 20s, 20 towns, and Sony was fortunate to be one of them. Our police station and our PD building committee, along with Chief Hale's guidance and Chief Hion, is moving forward with the plans for the new police station. The committee will be obtaining quotes to remove all the furniture in the building and plans for being drawn up for remediation and contamination areas defined in our Phase One and Two. We have a new restaurant that will be coming online at the end of the month, Shafrago, and another one that will move in near Eddie's. Stay tuned for the ribbon cutting. Some repair work has been done to hilltop hose roof recently in preparation for both fountain hose and hilltop roofs to be done in the springtime when the conditions will be favorable. I plan on securing additional funding for sidewalks on the lower wards of our city, and we will be beginning solicitation for Prindle Avenue and Poloski Highway, which we'll hear about shortly. Our budget process has already begun, and we are hoping that everyone looks towards efficiencies and cost savings measures so that we can help our residents and provide to them uncompromised city service. Thank you. God bless you all, and God bless the great city of Ansonia. Have a safe and wonderful new year. Thank you.
Any questions from the other member of Mayor Cassetti? Okay, let's deviate from the agenda. Ms. Acquavalo? Ms. Acquavalo is our auditor for the city. Welcome, John.
Thank you. The way that we usually do it is we go over the opinion, go over the findings, and if anything comes up, please feel free to interject if there are questions. I'm happy to answer them. The findings or the opinion is a clean opinion on the financial statements. It started on page four. In our opinion, the financial statements are referred to above or presented fairly in all material respects, regards to the financial position of the governmental activities, the business activities, each major fund, and the remaining fund information for the city of Ansonia as of June 30th, 2018. It's a clean opinion on the financial statements. It's the best opinion that an auditor can give on the financial statements. Now, what we usually do is we usually go right to the budget to actual report because that's what's governing the city and gives you the ability to tax. So that is located on page 21 of the financial statements. Now, there's major increases and decreases during the year. The city adjusts the budget and transfers are done with on the board of apportionment taxation level. The most important numbers are the expenditure numbers that went over budget, and there was one department that did go over budget, and that is the Board of Education for the year ended June 30th, 2018, to the tune of $225,694. We had an anticipated loss for the year of 5.8 million. The city came in at 4.1 million dollars. Fund balance started at 11.8 million, very healthy fund balance, and it decreased to 7.6 million. And it's important to note that the reduction was a planned reduction in fund balance.
When you say planned reduction, can you be a little more specific with that?
It was budgeted. It was budgeted. It was a budgeted loss.
Okay.
Are there any questions on the budget to actual?
I have a question regarding the over budget for the Board of Ed, any amount of $225,000. Does that over, does that include the $500,000 from our June 11th agreement with the Board of Ed?
It does.
So they overspent?
It does, but I can go into that a little bit further when we go through the findings.
Okay.
Now, there's another report that you have. It's the federal and state single audit report. It's our report on compliance. That report tells what we do as it relates to the internal control, our responsibility and the city's responsibility. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on compliance as well as internal control over financial reporting. And during testing, we find certain things that we have to relay to the board. Those findings, areas that we found to be deficient, those are starting on page 13 of the report. So I believe there were five findings that we came across during testing. It starts with 2018-001 and goes to 2018-005. 2018-001 is accounts payable for the school lunch program. The condition was the cash and accounts payable were understated at year end. There were checks written, but they were held and not paid out for months after the fiscal year. The reason why this is not good is because cash is understated, there's weakness in the controls, and accounts payable is understated, and it was understated by $102,000. So we had to propose a journal entry which was recorded. The next finding is the 2018-002 payroll cutoff for the school lunch program. The school lunch program does not timely repay the Board of Education for wages, related payroll taxes that are incurred on its behalf. So the payroll is paid initially from the Board of Education, and then it's later reimbursed. Sometimes those reimbursements don't take place right away. Sometimes they take place in a significant period after the year end, and that's what causes understatement of expenditures. It's harder to recover the money. It's just a weaker system. What we recommend is that the Board of Education draft their account directly for the payroll so there's no lag at all. That could be set up with the payroll company, one way or the other. The money should come out timely within a reasonable period of time, preferably when the monies are paid.
Which would be?
Immediately. Right after, right after your account is drafted, you would want that money to be replenished immediately. This, our recommendation, is so the money's taken directly from their account so there's no lag at all. There's no reason for a check to be cut from one party to another. It's coming directly out of their account, thereby having to be recorded directly on their books immediately.
So there was cash that wasn't deposited for almost a year?
Well, there was, in this case-
That it was identified?
There was, it was months. I don't know, I mean, and it's, it's my understanding that that still happens to date. So there is a lag still. Our response to that is that the money should be drafted directly from their account.
Mr. Acquavalo?
Yes.
Excuse me. Did you inquire with the city as to why there was that lag, why it took that long to get that money? Because the Board of Ed can't hold money, you know that.
It's not, it's not the Board of Ed in this case.
Right.
It's the school lunch program.
Okay. And where's the money held?
It's held in the school lunch program cash account.
All right. And who controls that account?
All those peripheral accounts are pretty much controlled by the Board of Education.
Okay.
But in this case, you have a director, food service program director, that has a lot of control over there as well.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
It indicates on both 001 and 002, it says pause, it says lack of cutoff procedures-
Right.
... understanding of generally accepted accounting principle. What, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. Yes. When you have, you have a fiscal year end, June 30th, you'd want to see that transactions that are related to that period to be recorded within that period. So in this case, if cash is paid out, you'd want to see it properly recorded, properly. Whether, if it's, if you write checks and you hold them, you still have the cash. And if you're holding it for months on end, and it's coming out of your cash account, it's showing your cash account down here, when in fact it is up here. And that's, that's, your numbers are understated. Accounts payable, if expenses are incurred or expenditures are incurred within, as of June 30th, you'd want to see them pulled back into the correct fiscal year to accurately report those monies. And I can't stress that enough for an entity to show expenditures within the period. It starts them, the whole budget process, once you pull all that money into the correct period, all those expenditures, now you have a good base. If you have wrong numbers going back and forth, you have, you're flawed right from the very beginning.
So is this a lack, when you say cutoff procedures, is it a lack of year-end reconciliation?
Right. Well, it could be on a month, it could be on a month-to-month basis. We don't, we don't test month-to-month, every single month. Our focus is June 30th, numbers, that's what we're reporting on. So our focus is, to answer your question, is as of June 30th.
Because you have a lot more of your report to do, right? Besides just Board of Ed?
When, when you say a lot-
Well, I think, I'm just looking, I'm looking at, I got questions, you know, for the Board, you know, as far as the Board of Ed's audit goes. And I think there's other people here that do too. And I just, if there, if we can go over the whole audit, the way you were going to, and then go back to them, can we do that? Make it easier for you, I think?
Well-
That's what he's doing.
Is that weird?
If you stop talking, that's what he's going to do. If you stop talking, that's what he's going to do.
I, I, it's fine.
No, I like, the questions are good.
I don't have a problem with that.
The, the next find, the next finding is the Board of Ed reconciliation with the city. The Board of Education detailed ledger and the city's general ledger for the Board of Education did not reconcile until December 2018 for the June 30th, 2018 year end. There were various transactions that were not recorded on either the city's records or the Board of Education records. A formal reconciliation should be performed on a monthly basis to ensure the agreement between the city records and the Board of Education records. Now, I already have received a lot of questions about the cause of this. Now, there was a breakdown in communication between the Board of Ed and the city. The city was asking for information, and the Board of Ed wasn't giving the comptroller enough information to reconcile. And I can't say why, other than I think it was reactionary to their budget being cut, but I don't, that's a question for them, not for me to answer. I can't tell you what the effect was and what the bottom line was. It led into the next finding. So from one finding, we went right to another finding, and that's, there were adjustments that were not recorded on the Board of Ed books as they relate to insurance claims and a reclassification of an expenditure that was for $108,000 that was improperly classified as a liability. So a lot of this stuff would have came to the forefront if a monthly reconciliation was done, and if all the information is flowing back and forth between the city and Board of Education. It's impossible to prepare a reconciliation unless you have all the information. Our solution to the problem is that we recommend that the Board of Education utilize the accounting system to reconcile cash, accounts receivable, accounts payable, deferred inflows of financial resources, and other additional income and expense ledgers that they have to have a complete self-balancing set of accounts. What they do now is they just have one number. They have an expenditure number, and they say, this is what our number is. If they have a full self-balancing set of accounts, these items would have been caught early enough within the period of time to adjust. So that, in my mind, is a significant deficiency. If their proper controls were in place, these adjustments would have been recorded timely.
So how could, how could they not have, how could they not have sufficient controls in place?
Okay, most of the time-
But they have a budget. Hopefully, that they follow.
Right. That's really the next item, but yes, they have, they have a budget that they use. They have a purchase order system. They have, the self-set balancing accounts, if they use them properly, then the cash would have been reconciled within the system. And then it just, it's impossible to make a mistake. They're just giving the city one number. This is what our expenditure number is. And if they don't give full information, then we're guessing, or the city is guessing at that point in time of what the missing pieces are. So it's very important for all the information to come from the Board of Ed over to the city.
Thank you.
The next finding is the Board of Education budget. A review of the Board of Education budgeted expenditures reported, the Board of Ed, Board of Education over expended the approved budget. In addition, the original approved budget for the Board of Education was subsequently reduced. Now, according to Connecticut general statutes, once the budget is set, that's the number that has to, that the Board of Ed gets. This is from my experience. I don't know if I'm going to have disagreements about it, but from my experience, once, once they say, if you say it's 31 million X number of dollars, that's, that's what it is. You can cut every other department that you want, but you can't cut their department because of the Connecticut general statute 10-222. With that said, they did go over budget, and primarily, the expenditures were because During the review of the city's Board of Education detailed ledger, we noted that the Board of Education operating expenditures of $31,986,178 exceeded its final budgeted appropriations of $31,764.84 and the original appropriated budget of $31,864.84. On June 20th, 2017, the Board of Alderman approved the original Board of Education budget to be $31,864.84. The original budget was later amended to $31,264.84 during the fiscal year. A settlement on June 11th, 2018 of an additional $500,000 was reached, and the Board of Ed budget increased by that $500,000. Right now, there's current litigation arbitration on this matter, so I can't disclose or know what the actual effects of this is. From my experience, department or Board of Ed budget going over budget, I haven't seen any recourse for the board to go back and get money from them. I've never seen that happen before. How do we fix this problem? We recommend that the Board of Ed issue purchase orders only to the extent of the appropriated budget amounts. If more monies in excess of the budget amounts are needed, the Board of Ed should transfer budget appropriations from other unexpended amounts within their approved Board of Alderman budget, budgeted amount. If additional appropriation is required, they need to come to the Board of Alderman and ask for an increase. That's, that's the solution to the problem. They're budgeting, if they're using their purchase order system, if they're utilizing their budgeted lines, then they can quickly maneuver and find out if that they over expended and make adjustments.
And that's by state statute?
That's, that's states, well, giving them, giving them their budgeted line is state statute, but I'll defer to Corporation Counsel on that. That's, that's his job, really.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just to make sure I understand this correctly, they had a budget of tax, which was 900 and, or 31,864,484?
Yes.
And they went over that?
Correct. They did.
Okay. Who oversees that within the Board of Ed?
Well, I get, it would be, it would be the business manager, it would be their, their board also. They're supposed to be reporting on a monthly basis to their board, this is what our expenditures are and so on.
So the Board of Education itself, the elected officials, along with the, what was the title of the-
Business manager.
The business manager. They're basically directly responsible for this?
They, they, Board of Ed went over budget.
And is there any recourse, can you believe with that? Can you legally go over budget?
That's, I can't. Well, you're not, you're not supposed to, but the only real controls that the city has in place is, is not to give them money. This is what your budget is, here it is.
And where do they get the money?
Well, you're dealing with two separate issues. One, you're dealing with cash, and two, you're dealing with expenditures. If they can incur expenditures after the fiscal year, but that again falls in that cutoff, whole cutoff issue, that certain expenditures are incurred. If you know where you're going to be early enough within the fiscal year, then you can maneuver and make changes, reduce other line items, and adjust what you need to do. But that's, stronger monitoring controls are needed. And just to, you know, let everybody know, I am going over to the Board of Education and discussing this with them tomorrow. So they're going to, they're going to, we're going to discuss all this, the controls that need to be put in place to make corrections and put a positive spin on this. I'd also recommend that subcommittees, boards get together and talk. We've done a lot of trying to get both sets of the city and the Board of Ed in the same room so we can work through this whole reconciliation process, because as you've seen, usually we have the audit done in November, early December, and we're sitting down with board members. This pushed us all the way to the end of the year, exactly where we didn't want to be. We wanted to issue our report in, in November and be done and get everything out the door. If the reconciliation process is fast, we're talking about big numbers on a 64, 65 million dollar budget, 31 million, 32 million, half of that is Board of Education. If that number doesn't reconcile, it puts a damper on things. A material number that we need locked down as of June 30th, it has to be locked down.
John?
Yes.
So you made a comment that their budget was increased, was increased by 500,000?
Yes.
Now, now I'm going to spin around, and I'm going to talk to Corporation Counsel. Now, that $500,000 was given to, as an emergency fund to go from, to the end of the, end of the year to the beginning of the next year? And it was, I think it was from June 30th? I mean, from June 12th to June 30th?
That's correct. The Board of Education-
But so that money, my, my point, what I'm getting at across before you go further is, that $500,000 wasn't really a budget increase. That $500,000 was put in there as, as emergency funding. If you, can you-
To provide context, and really just a refresher for the purposes of this board, some context for the members of the public who may not be up to speed, the Board of Education had asserted late in the school year, last year, that they were on the brink of becoming financially insolvent and required additional money in order to make salary and to complete the school year. They made a motion for an emergency injunctive relief. We went to court, and the parties worked out a voluntary agreement to provide $500,000 in additional funds with the stipulation that expenditures from that point, which was about June 11th, June 12th, until the end of the budget year, were only for essentials as defined in the actual written agreement, which included salary, included insurance, it actually included textbooks, and some other specified items.
So, now that went through the Board of Alderman, that was-
It was approved by both the Board of Alderman and the Board of Education.
Okay. So then, after it's been approved, all of a sudden, you don't have to ask for approval anymore?
Correct.
But, I guess to follow, to follow up on that point, is that if I heard you correctly, you were talking about the general ledger and the reconciliation and the overall Board of Education budget. So you made a comment that they were using one account basically as an expenditure account, and there wasn't a lot of detail coming to the city to describe what those expenditures were?
They have detail over there.
On their end?
Right. The city, but the city-
But those details weren't coming to the city yet?
Correct. But the city only reports one line for Board of Education. It's Board of Education operations, and then they have, they actually have, actually another one, Board of Education grants, if I remember correctly. So there's two lines. And in this case, there was a third line, Board of Edu, the settlement, that was 500,000, of which I think they spent 410,000 of the 500,000 out of that.
After, when the time period was over with?
They have voucher-
Or, or, no, no, I, I-
I think it, I think it was, I think it was approx, going off of memory, I think it was about 410,000.
What, in what month of the year? Was it after June 30th?
Well, the expenditures were related to June 30th.
And they fell in that criteria? I mean, I don't expect that you can necessarily answer to that. I know court-
I know most, a lot of it was insurance, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I can't really answer that.
Well, that was my, where I was going with the question was, is that in that timeframe, with regards to that $500,000 contingency fund that was set aside, the emergency fund, what was exactly, there's no detail- what was exactly, there's no detail being provided?
There were vouchers.
There were vouchers.
Yeah. I mean, but Richie can explain it a little bit better, but usually what happens is that the Board of Edu, in the past, the Board of Education will give, these are our expenditure lines, this is what we need the money for, and this is the total dollar amount, please transfer that money over to us. And then the transfer would be, they sign off on it, transfer the money please. And on this side, it's recorded, and then it's transferred, the money's transferred over.
As a lump sum, right?
As a lump, as a lump sum, right, because it's only hidden, it's recorded as a lump sum on the city's books. It's a credit to cash and a debit to that expenditure line, just in increasing every month, or every voucher that's getting paid is recorded by the comptroller or the finance department.
John, you mentioned in 218003, and again, I believe in 004, quote, "The lack of communication and information shared between the Board of Education, the city and the Board of Education."
Right.
Isn't communication the key in situations like this?
I think, I think it is. I think that you have to have, it's communication and information. You have to have information shared on both ends, and there has to be a level of trust between the two parties. I, like I said, I think that the best way to go about this is to have subcommittees sit down and say, these are what our procedures are gonna be, and get everybody in the same room and sign off on it. Once everybody's in the same room, don't let them out until, until they have to, you know, we have to get a solution to this problem. It's still ongoing.
But you've been doing, for eight years, you've been working for this town.
Many years, yes.
Now, is this the first time you've ever recommended this?
Yes.
With the Board of Ed?
Yes.
Because as far as I have been here, I can see is, I've never saw the Board of Ed go over budget like this and then not ask for money. And I, my concern is, is that it's related with the $500,000 that was, that was supposed to be a safety net. That wasn't part of their budget. And they, and I'm looking at it through my eyes, and I'm concerned that this was used for the budget and not told to anybody intentionally to spend it as fast as they could. I mean, this is the first time they've ever done this. You're, I mean, when Dell, when Dell was Mayor, it's never-
I can't, I can't remember them going over budget. I can't say that we've never had a problem with the reconciliation between the Board of Ed and city. I, off the top, I think we might have had a problem once or twice.
That they were going, going-
No, the reconciliation between the city and Board of Education. Not over budget. I can't remember-
Not over, right, not over budget.
Well, yeah, I can-
Here?
Oh, the grants did go over budget in the past, but that was not their operating budget. That was because they had an offset with the revenues, and they just didn't come back to the Board of Alderman and say, please increase my lines, you know, revenue and expenditures.
I mean, we had, we at the Board of Alderman in June had to sit together and decide to put this safety money in place begrudgingly. None of us wanted to do it. And then we did it, and I mean, to me, this is the thanks we got. I mean, I'm just speaking myself. Not putting anyone on.
Mr. Scherer.
And I don't know if this is within the scope of what you do or what you did. Are you able to ascertain whether that, and I'll just simplify, I'm not using your word, but like holding the cash part in the first ones?
Yes.
That, was it that, or is it the, like, or is it using, like, tomorrow's or next budget's money to pay for the last year? Or can you not ascertain?
The first, the first finding is related specifically to the school lunch program, not the Board of Education. The money, the monies that their Board of Education, I, they're not holding hundreds of thousands of dollars if that's what you're asking, at least from what I've seen during my testing. The school lunch program, that's a different story. They have, they have more money than, I probably recommend that they have only about two and a half months operating in their cash accounts. Having more than that is unnecessary because they get reimbursed from the federal, the state government.
I'll probably go somewhere with that. But anyhow, so is it a, is it common then to have that monthly reconciliation back forth or within the school?
It depends on the relationship with the Board of Ed and the city. I've seen, I've seen where they, they just, they don't do it until year end, and they'd sit down and hash it out. The strongest way is monthly. That way, you have two sets of eyes looking at the numbers, and you have one person saying, this is, I agree with you, this number is the right number, and if we did it, I think that they stopped with information about March of '18. I don't know if that's right or not. I think it is. So, the reconciliations from there to the most critical points of the year, you're getting to the year end, and you're doing your projection, and you're saying, I need money, but you don't have a reconciliation with the city, which is, which cash is coming out of the city's account. So, monthly reconciliations, in my opinion, are an absolute must. You have to have it. If not, then everything kind of just falls apart.
So, if we requested that, not that you can answer this either, but if we requested that and then they just decided not to comply, then what would we have to do?
I don't know what to say about that. They, you can, you can ask them, that's what happened. You can ask them for information. They, I, I would like them to give the regular information over, have self-balancing accounts, utilize the purchase order system, utilize their budgeting a little bit better to make sure that their numbers are, their projections going forward, they know exactly where they are. If you're paying off, if you're paying off a purchase order that is negative, it doesn't mean anything. It's, you're taking money from one pocket, you're putting it into another pocket, and they're just keep paying from the pocket, and they're, you can't do that. You know, that's a, that's a purchase order system. But the Board of Education's well aware of these issues, and like I said, I'm gonna go over these with them in depth a little bit more, and hopefully we can bring both parties together so we can, we can get some closure on this and the reconciliations are moving forward. Yes.
I've got a question for you, and it goes back to the overspending of the budget. Let's say I own a business, okay? And I hire you to take care of all my financials for the business. We sit down at the beginning of the fiscal year, we go over, and you say, Dave, we've got an operation, an operation budget of $500,000. I'm gonna manage within that. I go to work all year long, think everything's great, you come to me at the end of the year and say, listen, because of X, 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 I went over budget. What would be?
Fire.
Thank you. That's where I'm going. There's some accountability here. I mean, this is still in my mind.
That's me, that's me in a business, not me in government.
I think one should be hand in hand, I understand.
I'm not gonna argue that point, but that's what, that's what you, in government, it's a little bit, it's a little bit.
Well, I hope everybody in the Board heard that, because I think at the end of this, we should start asking for some resignations in certain areas.
Charlie, one second.
Mr. Rockvall, do you take care of any of the cities and towns?
Yes.
Two, three, four, five, or six?
About, about six.
Thank you. So, in your experience, have you ever encountered, besides Ansonia, a city and town, city or town, that halfway through the fiscal year removes any amount of money, $500,000, $1 million, $600,000 out of that operating budget? Have you ever encountered that? Yes or no?
No.
Thank you. Can you answer my question?
That was due, that was due to the state. The state caused that to happen, you know that.
Charlie, don't blame it on the state. It was this Board of Alderman that voted to rip, steal $600,000 from the Board of Education and shoot him.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes, sir.
The bottom line is, right? Even if they had that, they still went above that. Right?
That's true.
Okay.
Mr. Rockvall, I wanna get back, Mr. Kim, one second? I wanna get back to the lack of communication between the city and the Board of Ed. You know, the Board of Ed passed a resolution on July 30th at the high school, I was at the meeting, and it's, I'm gonna just read from this, where the city has misused this abundance of non-required information to make misrepresentations to the citizens of Ansonia. I take exception to that, but it goes on, directs the superintendent to instruct all board employees to refrain from responding to any request for information from city officials without the direct authorization of the superintendent or a designated. I know Mr. Bishara has requested information from the Board of Ed numerous times, too many times. He was stonewalled. So, the lack of communication is not on the city's part, it's on the Board of Education's part, not complying with our requests for information.
Is that, you're asking me that?
Sure.
Well, Rich knows better than me how many times he asked for information. What I do know is that information should go from the Board of Ed to the city as it relates to the numbers, so the amounts could be reconciled. Again, this was, this was, in my opinion, reactionary to their budget being cut, but that's only my personal opinion on it, and you'd have to ask the Board of Education as to why. Again, I strongly urge that subcommittees meet and iron through this problem and get through, get through this reconciliation process, so the Board of Education and the city are operating on the same level from an expenditure standpoint. I don't know where we are right now. I do know that we're six or six and a half months, six months into the year, and I don't know if the Board of Ed is reconciling with the city or the city's reconciling with the Board of Ed right now. This is, that's next year's audit. Yes.
You've mentioned a couple times that the, like, working with a payroll company and setting up, you know, a system?
Mm-hmm. They have a payroll, they have a payroll company that they use.
So, is that something that, in the other schools, like, you know, the other towns you've worked with, that's the setup, or just looking like forward as far as what's going to work?
Yeah. I mean, the payroll company is, they should be able to draft accounts. If not, I think that you could set up the authorized signers to draft the accounts. If the payroll company only says that they're gonna, they're only allowed to draft one account, then, then they have to set up an alternative means, and there has to be some kind of monitoring. But there's absolutely no reason for that not to happen quicker than the way it is. And my, my contention is, is that it happens and it's sep, and spreads over years, and if it spreads over a year, then the June 30th numbers, if we don't catch it during testing, the numbers are not correct.
Mr. Dempsey?
I have a question relates to school lunch account. I'm just having a little trouble. But I know running a business, understate it, by the way, is a nice way of putting it. Basically, I had over $100,000 just on account or an act of honor. Do we know where $100,000 cash checks was?
Yeah, on his desk. They wrote, they wrote them, they wrote checks-
Where were they?
On his desk.
On his?
On, well, it's a check.
Right.
I saw, I, yeah.
So, we had uncashed checks?
Checks written out to vendors, not to him. It's not, it's not money that was received.
But it was money that was supposed to pass through. I'm, he, I'm the former chairman of the tax department, I understand the process.
If I, if I-
But it's sat there.
Yeah. I don't know why-
Until after the fiscal year.
I don't know why it was there. I do, I do know that when you write checks, they should be sent out immediately.
Vendors, our bills should be paid, not-
They should be paid immediately.
They should not be sitting on his desk.
In a strong system, in a strong system. That's the way, that's the way it's ran.
That's a large amount of money. To me, that's scary.
Well, for, for that program, it is.
What's the largest amount they had this year? Because I understand it was quite a bit more than that, it was high six figures at one point?
Yes.
Which was what, about, close to a million?
No. I don't, I don't think it was that high.
700, 800?
Probably, at any time during the year. I don't know if it was 800,000, but the number, the number is actually in the financial statements as of June 30th, school lunch, under the school lunch program. Like I said, in my opinion, the program has more money than what it needs right now to operate. They should only have a couple months, two and a half, three months.
So, either we should be feeding the kids better, or that program needs to be adjusted, something, people should be paid more, or something's not getting done if we end up with that money.
There's-
I think it's yours, and that's-
The program should be break even.
Right.
If that's what you're asking.
Exactly. It's state and federal money.
It's a, it's a, it should be a break even program. It's not a program to make a profit.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
And your findings, was there anything regarding a deleted journal entry?
We, we did encounter a journal entry that was, it related to the insurance. When we were going through the reconciliation process, I can't say why, but when we're going, when you go back and forth and you're reconciling with the city and you have a second set of eyes and controls in place, things kind of get caught. So, I don't know, I, I don't know exactly why, but it was caught.
Journal entry that was deleted?
It was caught, yes. And, well, it was added back subsequently because it needed to be, to make it reconcile with the city's numbers.
Is there any reasons for that?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Is that what's in this month, 03, or no? The reported, or is that something else?
$108,000 insurance expenditures that were improperly classified as a liability. I believe that was the number. Yes.
Any idea when that bill came?
The insurance bills?
Beginning or end of the year, middle of the year?
Well, that was, the $108,000, I think, took place in February. That was a transaction that was originally recorded as a liability and should have been recorded as an expenditure. The $95,000 didn't take place until July, I believe.
So, that deleted entry, who would, who would do that? The business manager?
I don't have access to that.
The, it would be, it would be the business manager, maybe, I believe she asked the Phoenix people, the guys who do the ledger. I don't know, I don't know the reason for it, I can't speak to that. All I know is that we caught it. It was caught.
So, I'm in Accounting 101, and where would that come on the grade level, A to F? How would that, what would that score as, under Accounting 101?
Usually, you want an, you want an audit trail. You want an audit trail, so you wanna show your mistakes, ins and outs.
That's a big mistake.
It's, it's 100, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's a mistake.
Thank you.
Yes.
You indicated that the communication sort of shut down in or around March, right? The information, the flow of information from the Board of Education doesn't exist.
Some of that, some of that is me going off of what I'm being told, asking, talking to the Board of Ed, talking to the, talking to the comptroller, and everybody else in between.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, and you've been doing the audits here in the city for a few years at least, right? At least, four, five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay. So, you've seen it year over year in terms of sort of auditing expenses, expenditures, and seeing sort of the flow, when invoices are coming in, when they're being paid out, that sort of thing?
Right.
Is that, I guess I'm curious as to, year over year, from, let's say, '16, '17 to '17, '18, was there an uptick in terms of, from that March date when the sort of communications stopped working? Was there more expenditures that you can sort of see on the Board of Ed side? In other words, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that we're over budget, so once the communications stopped occurring, were they spending more than they normally would have in previous years?
We checked the cutoff, we specifically checked the cutoff between the 17, the 18, '18 budget and the 18, '19 budget. We reduced our scope, our testing, because the risk is higher, and we didn't, we didn't find that they were pulling expenditures in or pushing them from one year to the next. The major issue was the self-insurance fund, and I believe that they got caught with a bill that they didn't anticipate as of June 30th. It's called an IBNR. So, when you go, when you switch from full insured to self-insured, you have to fund that liability. So, as of, as of June 30th, they got hit, they got hit with a big bill, which accounts for a lot of their over, their over budget. I don't believe that they anticipated.
They shouldn't, they've been talking about self-insurance for years.
I don't know what they were-
And they, and I went to a lot of those meetings, and that was one of the things discussed, is that you have to take and put risk money in a pool. They knew that, they knew that for years. So, that wasn't-
But the bill that they got for the IBNR didn't happen until-
Did, I mean, I'm just, just looking at it open mindedly. Is it possible that when they switched controllers, that this is when the error started?
I can't speak to that.
Well, there was no noticeable change.
The IBNR, the IBNR, we're talking about apples and oranges. The IBNR is some, is brand new. That's, that's something that's brand new, and James never had to deal with that. So, I can't, I can't say that.
But you didn't have any troubles like this when he-
We didn't have a year like this. This, this is, this is an anomaly. I, I, you don't see this. This is very unusual. It's a very unusual year. Seventeen eighteen was a very unusual year. We had, um, like I said, we went a lot longer than we would have if, if everything was a normal year.
And in your opinion, why is that?
Litigation, reconciliation between the Board of Ed and the city, um, cooperation. There was, there's more coro- cooperation in the past. You know, this year, there was shutdown in communications, lack of information, lack of sharing information.
But it's, but it's all on their end. When you start looking at the, the numbers, the problems aren't coming from the city's side.
The, well, they're-
You're just saying the communication should be better, but when they, they closed the door on communication, they, you know.
Yeah, we, we, we're, we're reporting on the numbers and what we find, not on all of that. I can't, I can't speak to that, and I really, I really don't want to.
No, I don't.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, does your audit, um, cover the state grants coming in and how that affects the budget as well?
Yes.
Because a lot of the discussion over that, that money, that additionally that was allocated that was taken back had to do with whether or not state grants were gonna come through, which was not-
That was a problem.
Until later in the year. And I'm just wondering if it was included in this, if those numbers are reconciled to, if you saw any other anomalies anywhere else as a result of what was going on in the state last year.
This, you're talking about the state grants as they relate to the Board of Education only? Um, they're reconciled. Um, they, they have a revenue and expenditure line. They also have a cash account and receivable and a, and a deferred revenue, which is monies that are received in advance. Richie's team does a really good job, um, laying out the journal entries and making sure those numbers are in agreement. So, it is reconciled. Does, does that answer your question?
How did you find a deleted entry? What did it look like for the, for the layman?
I didn't find it. Richie found it. That's part of the reconciliation process that has to occur. When you, when you're looking at the individual transactions and you're saying, I gave them X number of dollars, but they only have Y, you have to ask why. Why is this number different? And if all the information's coming over, you know, then you have, you have a full, you have a full picture.
Could there be more deletions that we don't know about?
I don't think so, and the reason why I say that is because we're reconciled. Lisa's numbers, Board of Education's numbers, their bu- budget number, thirty-one million five seventy-five agree with what's on the city's books to the penny now. So, they're in agreement. So, I would say that all the transactions that Rich has on the city's books are also in agreement with Lisa's, so they're, they're right where they need to be as of June 30th. As of June 30th. Now, I can't-
With their overspending.
That, that doesn't-
When you say the books, they're, they're, they're both the same, the overspend, you can look in the books.
The actual numbers are what they are.
Yeah, which is overspend.
So, if you, you found the deleted entry, is there any other information as to why that was? What that was for?
The process of reconciliation in the past has usually started after the first of the year, and what we tried to do in the past is try to just reconcile their books to ours. I started sending Lisa Jones requests in February, asking for the reconciliation in March, April, May, June. We, we attempted many, many times together to try and reconcile, and from voucher perspective, we could, but when we got to the actual expense portion, which their expenditure ledger piece of it should match to our seven oh two line item, we couldn't get there. We were off by some hundred thousand dollar area. And, um, as time progressed, we, we, you know, we were still talking and trying to find out where this was, but again, my, from my perspective, I'm more, I'm financial, I'm an accountant. We tied books together. The fact that they don't have a full ledger system that they utilize over there doesn't help. They use an expenditure ledger, basically. So, after, when the court case started to come through, and we started to analyze the data to try and figure out where we were, I probably spent a hundred hours, mostly on my own time, trying to find out where this was, and I, digging deep into the data, and they were sharing data at that point in time with me, I was able to determine that they gave us a voucher that they told us to expense three hundred and thousand dollars approximately in February, but looking at the details behind it, I was able to determine that they applied ninety-eight thousand of that to their liability account, which is what they utilize for the cost sharing piece. So, when they pay an insurance bill for three hundred and four thousand dollars for the month, they process whatever's been taken out of co-pays, or from the grant fund, or from the cafeteria fund for insurances, and they net that, and the balance of that three hundred and four thousand would be applied as an expense to the Board of Ed. Well, the voucher that came here said to apply the entire amount. When they booked it on their end, they booked two hundred thousand and ninety-eight of it went against the liability account. It was a coding error, if you will. But it was difficult to find, you know, on a balance sheet on our side, we can find things because the balance sheet, to me, is the bible. And so, they don't really utilize that part over there, which I've offered a number of times to try and help them get there. It really would help them knowing what they have, what they don't have, and where it's going. But I found the ninety-eight thousand, I informed John Acavalo about it, because we were right around that June, July period. Things, once the, we went to court, things, the information started to get shut down. So, I let him know so that they could let them know that we had this ninety-eight thousand dollar, and, and the fix is a debit to the expense and a credit to the liability, and it was done, but-
A hundred dollars.
When, when the numbers came back later, I went looking for the fix, and I didn't see the, the fix or the original entry, and so I asked about it. He inquired.
And this is under your, uh, lack of understanding of generally accepted accounting principles bracket? Is that, I just don't understand how, how that happens.
How, how a transaction gets deleted?
Right. I work for a bank. If I were to delete a transaction, I would be fired immediately. Transactions don't just disappear.
Right.
I don't get how that happens.
You're in a different habit.
And you, that's-
Money's money, the transaction's a transaction.
How, how, or, or why? I can't speak to why. All I know is that it got caught, and we made the adjustment. Not we, the city made the adjustment, and the numbers aren't reconciled.
Mr. Bishara, what would happen to you if you deleted an amount like this? In your capacity?
I'm now retired. I'll leave it at that. Look, um, John and I have talked about this a number of times. He's pretty adamant it was just an error, and it was a, that there wasn't really anything malicious with it, it was just not having the knowledge of the accounting piece of this puzzle to know the proper way to correct coding.
Right, and the correction-
Yeah, we've talked a number of times, and I've said, you know, maybe one of the fixes is to, that there's an accountant that's hired that works part-time at the Board of Ed, part-time at the city, because there's a lot of flow of data that needs to be recorded and kept in a reconciliation or imbalance between the two sides.
Right.
I, I mean, I spoke to Lisa about this at one point, and I asked, what did they do where you came from, which was Canton, I believe, and that was actually the, what they did. The town in Canton hired an accountant that worked for both the city and the Board of Ed to ensure that the numbers that cross are in, are in balance. And again, talking with Mr. Acavalo, we're not uncommon in that boards, the board, uh, many times, the Board of Ed is run independently of the city, and they have a reconciliation that needs to be, that needs to be done on a, on an ongoing basis, so.
So, it would be okay for us to delete an entry on the city's side?
No, that's not a good-
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm not suggesting-
All right, I just, I just wanted to get clarification on that.
So, based on your experience over the past-
Okay.
-eight months, do you think the Board of Ed would like, would like to share an account with us?
I think with this pending lawsuit, just nothing's gonna happen until it's resolved, and I've asked anybody I can think. We need to fix the situation. I think Mr. Acavalo was alluding to that. Maybe our finance board needs, need, with the Board of Ed finance board, there needs to be a resolution to the conflict, and we can't really move forward without it, in my opinion. But we're not that far off that we can't make this work. It's worked for a lo- a lot of years, but we need to work together.
Mr. Dempsey, sure.
Historically, you said that the reconciliation process started after January 1, so essentially six months, almost, you know, you would essentially start halfway through the fiscal year.
Yeah, once we crossed the beginning of the year, we'd, if there were any anomalies, we'd go back and res- and, and fix them, and then we would try to stay in touch every month, every other month, depending on where we were, but, you know, we've always historically, after the first of the year, we would make, we would touch base with Board of Ed to see, where are you, here's where we are, and we would go through the voucher process for reconciliation. And again, the reason we weren't reconciled is because this one entry, this ninety-eight thousand dollar was the significant piece of that, why we didn't resolve, and, again, we got, had it as an expenditure on it or expense on our side, they had it in their liability section in their ledger, even though the voucher totals were the same on each side, it's just a matter of the accounting for it, so.
Just two, two more short questions to call to that. In previous experience, have you ever had that large of, of a difference between your books and their books that you can think of?
I'm not, I don't recall. I'm not gonna say that I haven't, but we usually can find issues quickly and fix them. Everybody makes mistakes. I, I tell my staff, there's nothing I can't do, or I can't fix that you've done, so let's find the problem and we'll fix it. There's nothing you can't fix in accounting, but-
The second part, do you think the recommendation of having monthly reconciliation means as opposed to, you know, starting after the first of the year might prevent something like that?
I think it's a, it's a, it's a great idea. Actually, Lisa Jones reached out to me last month. We sent her a, a month-end statement. It didn't balance or reconcile to hers. We have some, some entries on our side. There are a number of different pieces to this puzzle that, that we need to communicate more, and because we were still working on last year's audit, some of the things didn't get communicated from this way, that way. There's also things on their side, and things that occurred that made it kinda difficult. We had entries coming from the Board of Ed. Again, we're modified COOL accounting system for the city. We normally, by the end of August, I've got all the entries done, we're ready to go, because we accrue for those things. The Board of Ed was kinda working off almost a cash basis in that they had to issue invoices out to other school districts for special ed costs. Well, they had to wait until the checks came from those other districts so that they could record the credit back to last June, and so we waited. And then, we had the IBNR that we found, which is issued but not received, incurred expenditure.
Yeah, incurred but not reported.
Incurd but not recorded. And that was for three hundred thousand dollars. We happened to find out when, we went over there to, to talk to the Board of Ed, John, myself, and, uh, we talked with Dr. Malone and Lisa Jones, and we happened to be looking at some of the records for the insurance, and John happened to pick up the, but I didn't know what an IBNR was. And so, that was three hundred thousand that got pulled back, and then, um, in December, we got this credit for a hundred-
Hundred eighty.
Eighty-eight thousand dollars. So, we're recording all of these things that occurred from July 1 forward into last December and reversing into eighteen nineteen, so I'm still trying to figure out some of the entries that need to be recorded to make sure we've got the flow. Kim and I have been working on it, have been talking with John, to make sure we're not missing something, but I, somewhere there's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar credit out there from Anthem. We don't know if it's a check coming back, if it's going to ACEs, if the Board of Ed's gonna receive, but we're still trying to find pieces, so. I'm working right now, Lisa asked again for a December reconciliation. I have it on my computer. John and I were just talking about it. Kim and I are working on it, hope to get that to her soon, but trying to figure the pieces out, it's just not been an easy year, and it's continuing forward at this point.
Mr. Bishara, I have a question for you, if you want to.
Okay.
Sorry. Regarding the, uh, the temporary injunction, the June 12th, eighteen through June 30th to two thousand and eighteen, the board will only expend necessary expenses in the following categories: payroll expenses, including salaries, hourly wages associated with payroll costs and taxes, employee benefits, utilities, student transportation, insurance, special ed. Do we know if, uh, that was followed, spent on essentials during that period?
The, um, I, I can't tell you that off the top of my head. I don't know. I don't have the voucher in front of me. I, I, what I do know is that the Board of Education can spend up to their legal budget. You know, whether it's, the five hundred thousand is classified under four, or I know I'm, somebody might not agree with this, but their budget is their budget, and once, if, if it's cut below, they still have their budgeted number, and if they spent their budgeted number with, on their operations, then, then they're okay. That's an internal agreement between, um, the Board of Alderman and, and the Board of Education, and that was-
But they spent two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars beyond.
They did, they went over, they did go over, they went over their, their original budget of, too.
The, the original budget, not the one that we subsequently-
That's correct. That's correct. That's a true statement.
So, aren't there safeguards in place when that happens to a, to a board, like-
Well, that's, the safe, the safeguards, the safeguards are, are recommendations that, our recommendations are that they issue purchase orders, only pay off open purchase orders, that they have only, they're only paying up to their budgeted limits, or moving money from one budget line to another budget line. And that's something that I'm gonna talk to the Board of Education tomorrow, because there, there is room for improvement there.
So, they're supposed to, they're supposed to ask permission from this board to overspend?
Based on the statute, I guess.
And they didn't. So, would that be like, um, intentional? Was it in good faith? How did we find that out?
Well, the, some of the, some of the monies were an adjustment based on what we found during testing, and the insurance adjustments that went into play, um, the IBNR money, you know, so some of those, some of those items were found during testing. Those items got pulled back into fiscal year. Now, the cutoff, the cutoff should be strong, so those items are identified early enough so they can go to the Board of Alderman and say, hey, I need an increase in my, in my line of this, because our, our insurance increased more than what I anticipated. That's, that's the process.
But wasn't that insurance invoice, that, that failure to reconcile was back in February?
The, the, well, that's one, that's-
That carried forward.
Yes, that's one, but the other one happened, the, the IBNR, um, invoice wasn't until after the fiscal year.
Right, but they knew-
So, they sent a bill and, and like, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it happened. When was it?
IBNR was September, and they paid it out of the current fiscal year.
Right, so they, so if, I don't know if they could have done anything different to catch that, other than communicating with Anthem or their insurance company, whoever they are, and saying, hey, get me the, get me the bills quicker. I need to make sure that the adjustment's in place. If they did that, those numbers are based off of experience, and this is an initial year for the IBNR, so it's a little bit, um, tricky this year. Next year, they should be locked down. They should know what their numbers are gonna be early enough to, to recover and say, our numbers are, we're gonna be over, and we need an increase in our line, because our insurance lines are this, or they can cut- lines are this, or they can cut from other lines.
Well, I, I mean, I understand that. And I understand it's an initial year. And I remember sitting at the Board of Education meeting, it was January or February, where they were told there was going to be somewhat of a 25 to 30% increase. And they should basically be planning for that at that time.
That's part of their budget process that if, I, I don't know how, we don't test their budget. We don't, we don't analyze their budget. We don't check the validity of their budget. We know that this is, their number was approved and that's what they can spend up to. Their detailed lines, there's, if they have detailed lines that show their, their budget broken out, then they can recover early enough if they're utilizing the purchase order system and so on.
With quarterly reconciliations.
Quarterly, exactly. Utilizing a full balance sheet. It, it's, it's an easy fix. It's, it's an easy fix.
And that's one of the reasons I was sort of asking the questions, because the question in my mind is, earlier I was sort of alluding to, and I think you interpreted it as I was asking, you know, year in year, were they passing invoices over to the next year? What I was sort of asking is that when that communication broke down in March, April, whenever it, whenever it finally occurred, and that information is not flowing to be reconciled and to have the city have the ability to have that information, at that point in time, is there an uptick in spending? Because the way I'm looking at this is that in order to go 225,000 over your budget, you're looking at two things. You're either looking at your really, really bad management or really bad procedures and systems being in place to reconcile and check what your, where your books are, are, or this is an intentional overspend.
Right.
One of the two things has to be occurring.
I can't speak to that.
And I understand.
Intentional, but, but I can say that it's a deficiency in the system. That I can, that is a significant deficiency in their system that needs to be addressed. And the city's gonna get a chance to respond to these findings and so is the Board of Education. They have to write what's called a corrective action plan in detail what their plan is and that gets uploaded to the Office of Policy and Management.
Did you, you mentioned, they had a credit coming back from Anthem?
I didn't, I didn't mention that.
Someone, you made say?
Charlie, that was Mr. Richard Bashir, and he said that they were waiting on a check of 188,000. I wrote it down, waiting on a check on 188,000 from Anthem. So my question is, have they really exceeded their final budget appreciation if they're just waiting on a check of 188,000 from Anthem? That's my question.
Well, their purchase order, good question. Their, their PO was 200, their initial purchase order was 299,000 and it was reduced by the 181 because of the reconciliation process and getting that information. So their, their number, what their, their true IBNR number as of June 30th is 90, what the difference, 90 something thousand or whatever it is.
So when Anthem gives them this credit, where does that go? Should go back in, should go back in the city's contingency fund?
We don't know that exactly, but no, we've basically reduced the amount of the IBNR. We reduced the expense for 17, 18.
And the liability.
And liability for 181. It's now in 18, 19 somewhere. And that's the part that I'm trying to understand, if I'm recording it on the books correctly. And I need.
That comes from the communication process and, and getting information.
I know, I'm, I'm looking at it.
My assumption is that they would, they're gonna submit it in insurance bill that has that credit on it.
They had, they had to put this money in self-insurance with liability. They, that's the, the two, what is it, 225,000 or something? What was it that went in the insurance? Do you know off the top of your head?
I'm not sure of the references.
When they, when they had to take and put the, you know, if they end up having candidates that are in their insurance and they have illnesses and whatever, they have to put in a certain amount in that account to, to, in case they go over on their insurance estimates.
I don't really have very, very few of any details of their insurance, other than what I've gleaned from the process for, why.
I mean, it's in, it's in this report that they were, they were spending the... You know, I saw it here where they did, they had, they were short and they ended up having to spend more money for, for the insurance they were gonna do, the self-insurance. Is that correct?
There were bills that were submitted subsequent to June 30th related to the incurred but not recorded portion of the liability. Initially, it was 299,000 and then it got reduced by the 188,000 based on some adjustment that the insurance company came up with, netting, I believe it was netting about 97,000 in, in the purchase order that's recorded as of June 30th on the city's books.
Well, I, I can't find it, but.
Page 14 on the single.
So if Anthem is giving them a credit and you're saying it goes into the, to the next year, what is that credit that Anthem's giving, what is that for?
It's a reduction other bill. We don't, we don't know.
Doesn't have anything to do with self-insuring because they changed from a different policy?
Was they, what's the cap that they had?
There's a stop loss.
Stop loss cap.
There's a stop loss on it. And if they go over the stop loss, then the insurance company's taking the risk and they have to eat the liability. But I'm not, I'm not an insurance guy. I don't, I can't speak to all of that stuff. What I do know is that as of, as of June 30th, the liability is 97,526. It relates to the incurred but not reported portion of their self-insurance.
So were they overspent by 300,000?
No, their number is, right, whatever, whatever we have in, in the records, that's what it is.
Mr. Kessie?
Yeah. The state give them 100 or 1.8 million? But we give them 600,000 to make sure that they have enough in their budget.
Who's two? Alliance, 1.4 and Priority School was 400,000, I believe. About 1.8 million.
About 1.8 million, that's when we took the 600,000 back up.
At the budget, when the budget was finally due by the state, yeah, we did the modifications.
And they spent that too?
Alliance was, was, yeah, the grants, I believe, were mostly, I'm assuming. I don't know exactly to the dollar.
Yeah.
Plus, plus the 225, was it? Or what was the IBMR supposed to be final? 90,000?
97, 97.
99, it was like about 120, I think.
Like 1.9, 1.9 million to play with.
Now, the superintendent put the city, put the city in a panic. Parents, the superintendent put the city in a panic. The parents, school children, back the first, the first week of June. They couldn't keep the doors open. Is that true, false? Do we know?
I, we don't test them on a month-to-month basis. We test as of June 30th where their numbers are. And as of June 30th, they're, they're over. We don't, we don't go, July, August, September, we, we test their expenditures in total and we opine on, on the financials as a whole.
How could we find that information out? Do we have to order a forensic audit? I mean, how can we find that out?
Well, you're, the, the monies, when they're appropriated to the Board of Education, it's their, those are their monies to spend on their budgeted line items, how they, how they, according for their school purposes, you can't change that. Lisa, I, that's my, that's my, that's my opinion on it.
If that's, if that's.
They spent more than that.
They did.
And we don't know exactly what they spent it on, just like the 500,000. It was only supposed to be spent for certain things.
Well, there's vouchers. There are vouchers that, of the 500,000, there are vouchers that are totaled of what they spent it on, I believe.
Those are in order? Vouchers, 90 and 93 total, netted to about 385 that was reported on the 10-4B. It actually, when Lisa gave me the reconciliation, was 410,000 and change. The credits went against 702. The 411 went against the 500,000. And I believe those all were in compliance with the court settlement. They were for assurances, et cetera.
How's it going?
But the total of 410? 410 is what we ended up finally booking against it.
So 90,000 plus 250,000 is, oh, 345, is 340. Where?
That, the, what was the overage on the 702? 300 and something thousand?
I, I don't know.
I believe that'd be about correct. I think, we showed 702, it was 350 over on one and 90 under on the other, netted to the 228.
It sounds about right. That sounds about right.
Excuse me, I was asked by one of the Alderman for a five-minute break. Is there a motion for a five-minute break?
Motion for a five-minute break, second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Five minutes, 300 seconds.
300 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to go back in session?
Motion to go back in session.
Mr. Kessie, Secretary Castellini, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're back on the record, gentlemen. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Akavalo? Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Rivers?
Do we know, they have this choice program, right? And from what I understand, they give 5,000 per kid or something like that, right?
I, I believe that's what the dollar amount is. It's a, for us, let me just interrupt you. For us, that's open, I think, open choice. I don't think that's a major program. And we, we audit major, the major programs. On the federal level, we audit programs in excess of 750,000. Open Choice is a state program and we would audit that if it was over 200,000. So if I, I can try to answer your question, but if I can't, I'll, I'll get back to you.
Okay. My question is, is there any funding from the city side that funds that child? Because if they say we have 2300 kids and they say it's like 12,000 per kid, and if they're only getting five, where's the other one?
Okay, that, if they, if they fund, only, the only thing reported in the grant expenditures, line items, are grant expenditures. So if the state says that they give them 5,000, I don't know what the cost is to run that program.
Right.
But if there's additional costs, then it would have to come out of operations.
Which would be?
Their general fund, the general fund for the Board of Education. So I don't know what, well, the city would, but it would be budgeted by the.
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers would pay for that. If, if, but again, yeah, I don't, I can't tell you what the cost is on a program. I, I can only tell you, in, in the grant expenditures, they report the grant expenditures only, not a, a full dollar amount.
Right, but my point is if they're telling us it costs them, well, it costs us as a taxpayer to teach the kids 12,000 or 13,000 dollars a year. If they're only getting 5,000, where's that other 8,000, you know, coming from?
Yeah, that, that I can't. Well, it would be absorbed by operations probably, but I don't know. I can't, I can't tell you because we don't audit that. Yes.
Do you audit the Alliance grant?
The Alliance grant is, I believe it's an exempt program, but I think that we do look at the expenditures for the Alliance grant.
I, I only ask because those of us who are on the finance subcommittee here that we, you know, we have the issue with the state, in talking with members of the Board of Ed and specifically, you know, kind of come to an agreement that the additional funds would be to fund all-day kindergarten, which at the time was being, was under, you know, possible threat with that grant not being, coming through. Do we know if, when they did get those funds, if those funds were applied to that program?
I just wanna see if I, if that was tested as a major program. But I, what I can tell you, let me just come through this real quick. The answer's yes. The Alliance program was tested as a major program. And in that testing, we tested viable costs for that program and those program expenditures met the program requirements as approved by the state of Connecticut.
Mr. Akavalo, connect the statute 10-222 regarding Boards of Ed. If, if this budget was overspent intentionally or in good faith, we have to find that answer out. I believe it was, it was overspending, you know, through intentional means, then the Board of Ed members themselves could be held liable, according to the statute. Is that correct?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I, I've never seen any recourse from a Board of Ed going over budget, but that's, that probably, that's a question for Corporation Counsel. I can't, I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry.
Counsel, is that true?
Well, to clarify, the statute that President Makar referred to, 10-222, those require a Board of Education to get approval by its legislative body before it actually overspends its allocation for, for, for the year. In terms of the personal liability, there are additional statutes that theoretically could impose a personal liability for overspending. But in terms of the actual application, in most cases where this issue becomes contested, the Board is acting in good faith and, and I really don't know if there's a Connecticut, an instance in Connecticut where the, the Board has actually been held personal, personally liable, unless there's evidence of bad faith, that it was intentional or reckless, that it was above just a mistake, in good faith.
Thank you. The other statute will be, I believe, 7-349. Thank you. Mr. Yama?
I guess, I mean, this, your, your audit lays out these, what you would define as significant deficiencies. And it, I mean, certainly has me concerned. I guess, one question I have is that with regards to the deficiency, these four deficiencies we've been talking about, that you've identified, are you aware of any current policies, procedures in place, written or otherwise, that address any of these concerns at the Board of Education? Or is it, or are you not aware of any?
The, our, our audit is for as of June 30th. I can't tell you what they're doing now. I do know that these items were brought to their attention and I believe that they're trying to take action. But again, that is part of the corrective action plan actually being written by the city and Board of Education together to say, here's what the problem is, either, either we're in agreement or we're not in agreement and this is why, and this is how we're gonna fix the problem. Usually I don't get a Board to say, we don't agree with your finding. But, you know, in this case, I, I expect to see a corrective action plan that's detailed addressing these issues and hopefully including the recommendations that I'm making in the report. And, and I'm gonna push, and I'm gonna push that strongly because I, in order to get these significant deficiencies out of this report next year, those have to be implemented as soon as possible. And some, like I said before, some of the stuff is, is simple. Let's, let's get the purchase order system going. Let's, let's use the budgetary controls. Let's use the balance sheet. Let's, let's reconcile regularly with, with the city. Let's get the information going back and forth.
And that's, that's sort of my, my question. But as of June 30th, there were not these policies and procedures to your knowledge with the, with, on the Board of Ed side?
Right.
Okay. And, and sort of where I was going with that is, you said, I think you indicated you do six other school districts or municipalities?
Towns, maybe more, yes.
Okay. So in your experience, are these the types of policies and procedures that are generally in place?
The, the.
With regards to either a month-end, quarterly reconciliation, adhering to GAAP?
Usually, usually there's, there's some kind of reconciliation. We don't check on a month-to-month basis if it reconciles as of June 30th. But the reason, it makes it much more difficult as the year goes on, the more transactions that you have, it's harder to reconcile from one to the other. So that's why I say monthly. And you're dealing with a 32 million dollar entity that you have a ton of transactions going in. And the only way to do that, to make sure that you have control over that, is to reconcile that on a monthly basis. Now, I don't see any entities utilizing the balance sheet. So this is, this is something that I think would be extremely helpful for the Board of Education. I think the Phoenix system. system can do that, could, could help them do that, their software. If they utilize the balance sheet, you have self-balancing accounts, if you make an entry over here, you have to make an entry over here, and it kind of evens out, and it's a double check. Now, the, right now, the only check that we've had for a number of years, the city's had, is the reconciliation process, it's done by the comptroller. So, we need to add more controls in place, um, and, and I'll talk to the business manager and, and the Board of Education about all of these findings.
And I appreciate that, I mean, one of the, one of the things, and this is sort of where I was going with that, is that, we've been accused as, as this Board of wanting to oversee the day-to-day spending and how the Board of, Board of Education spends their money, and I don't think anybody on this Board wants to do that. But I think my concern is, is the, I want to make sure, our job, I, I take my position here, is making sure that the management there is doing their job and managing their money correctly, and these deficiencies suggest to me that there's a lack of these procedures in place that allow them to do it and do it well, and that's, that's sort of what I want to make sure, that our oversight is, is making, is ensuring is put in place, is to make sure that not only are, since we're charged with not only, you know, making sure that the schools are well-funded, but also making sure that the taxpayers are protected, i- is putting something in place to make sure that this isn't going to happen again, and how do we get there? Because right now, we're significantly lacking the information to be able to determine whether or not this occurred because of just an oversight, is this, is this some sort of managerial problem, is this a ledger problem, is this, or is this something that was done because of the litigation, the lack of communication? I, I don't have enough information at this point to be able to say that.
The, what you, when you have, this, in seventeen eighteen, you had a key person leave the Board of Ed and go to the city, that handled all these reconciliations and had knowledge of all of this, um, back-and-forth activity and assisted, um, Richie in getting him the information that he needs. During seventeen eighteen, that didn't happen anymore, because now that individual doesn't, you have turnover in a key personnel position, but you should, in, in a perfect organization, you should be able to recover from that by having written policies and procedures in place, so you can go through and, and do that, and, and the city, the city needs to do that, too, they need to have written policies and procedures going down, some of them are written, some of them aren't, and once you have that, if you have somebody that, you have somebody that leaves, you're not skipping a beat, and, and in this case, that individual was a strong accountant on the Board of Ed side, and when you have turnover and key personnel, things, things get missed. You know, I don't know, I can't speak as to whether they overspent intentionally or anything else, um, what I do know is that we have, we have some deficiencies that need to be addressed, and we're going to try to, uh, get that point across as strong as possible.
And I, and I agree, because I don't think anybody, anybody sitting here right now can say why, or what the, you know, what the answer to that question is. My concern is, going forward, what information do I need to have in front of me to be able to make that determination, to be able to make sure that things are going in the right direction now? And that's, that's where my mind is right now, is how do I get the information that I need to be able to make that judgment call? So.
Mr. Stoll?
Mr. Ravallo, so you're, you're going to do some more with the Board of Ed, and you're going to tell them the safeguards that you're recommending?
I'm going to, I'm going to go through the findings and the recommendations.
And, when is that going to be?
Tomorrow.
So, and how many days do you figure the window should be?
To, to implement? I, I would hope, I would hope some of the stuff they can implement right away, but-
If they, if they communicate to you that they don't want to have any more con, or they want to continue to have, uh, a lack of conversation with this Board and the fin, you know, and the finance, we need to do something that we'll have to think of what we need to do in recommendations.
I guess we'll find out more this week.
So, you think next week we'll be, we'll be hearing back from you, how you, how you look at that, and then we go from there, we may have to have a special meeting or something? Does that sound about right?
Got to do something, Charlie, because there's so many questions that we have, how do we get to the bottom of the dreaded F-word, you know, the forensic audit, is that what we have to do? I don't really want to go there.
Hopefully, we don't, but it sounds to me like by next week, we should know if they're going to be willing to work together with us or, or not.
That's right.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we can hold off and hope for in good faith, we're going to hope that they're going to work together, we're going to work together.
Mr. Cassetti?
Well, I'm just thinking, perhaps, uh, a memorandum to every department head, that if they're coming close to the, uh, or going to go over budget, that they have to follow a procedure of either going to the Board of, uh, to Bo or to us, but so, some people have to sign off on this, that they've been informed, and then, then we could make a, a proper decision with enough information. Right now, there's, there's no, uh, there's no, there's no rule.
All city departments, pretty much, except for the Board of Ed, have a bare-bones budget, right? Mr. Delasio? Mr. He, Mr. Heon, is that right? Right, we're pretty much bare bones, because we fund the Board of Education. Anything, anything else for, for Mr. Ravallo?
Not at this time.
Mr. Ravallo, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
[inaudible]
Mr. Mariney?
President Makar, I'm members of the Board, uh, first let me say, on behalf of the Mayor's Office, um, the Mayor finds the audit results concerning, distressing, extremely frustrating, given, um, how tumultuous, uh, last year's budget season was, and how much of an effort was it spent on all parties to make sure that all departments are spending within their means to allow us to provide services across the board here in the city. Um, but the Mayor also understands, um, that, that continued lack of cooperation, lack of communication, it's not helping kids, these programs are intended to serve, it's not helping the residents, not helping the taxpayers, not helping the hard-working teachers, so to that end, uh, the Mayor through Counsel has requested, and the offer has been accepted, for mediation between the parties, a mediation between the city and the Board of Education that will take place in front of a Superior Court Justice, Judge, Judge Holsberg, which is going to take place this Friday, and of course, this is not a formal court proceeding, this is voluntary on, on both parties' sides, so both parties had to say it was worthwhile to sit down and talk, and it's incredibly encouraging, and both parties will sit down with Counsel and Judge Holsberg on Friday to talk about ways that we could fix these problems, whether it be budgetary, whether it be sharing information, uh, and trying to get things on track, get us into a position where we could work together in good faith to get our, our, our jobs done, ultimately to serve the residents, taxpayers, kids, teachers in the city. Um, other than that, I don't have anything to report, I am going to ask that we break for executive session early, typically that is reserved to the final spot, for the final spot in our agenda, but we have outside Counsel tonight, we have, I believe, three residents, and given how late the meeting is running, I think, as a matter of convenience to those parties, who typically are not here joining us at these meetings, that we bump executive session up so we can get right to them, nothing has to do, by the way, with the Board of Education, they all have to do with claims.
You want that, huh?
Yeah.
Board of Order, I just need to ask one question, Mr. Mariney, through the President of the Board of Ed, if I may. Mr. Mariney, I have one question, uh, we're going into mediation, who from the Board of Education agreed to that mediation?
That was a discussion between Counsel, so I do not know who the decision-maker was.
It was lawyers talking.
It was the lawyers talking, but there could be no mediation without authority from either side, so the Mayor had to say, "Okay, this is where we'd like to go," and on the Board of Ed side, I'm sure that Counsel for Board of Education had to turn to the Board of Ed and, and get permission to get authority.
Nobody from the Board of Ed went wrong with that. Those, that- I've already canvassed them.
Okay.
So, what's that, yes?
That doesn't, that doesn't square with representation from Counsel, right?
Well, somebody's misleading, that's, you know.
We have a mediation Friday, and that could not happen without the agreement of both sides.
All right, thank you. Make a motion for executive session. Debuting the agenda, and Mr. Philippon, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Mr. Mariney, who would you like, who would you want for executive session?
Um, from the city side, if I could have, uh, Rich Bishar and Sheila O'Malley.
Okay.
And I want to invite, um, and we'll go piece by piece, actually, we'll-
Grab it up.
Grab it up.
All right. All right. With regards to the matter of Mills versus Ansonia, uh, motion to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Abstained.
Or abstention, Chicago Rivers. Uh, number one, Bissin versus Ansonia, re property damage, is there a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session?
Make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Mr. Rivers, second by Mr. Philippon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried. Imbrel versus Ansonia, re property damage, their motion to, uh, procedures directed?
Let me proceed as discussed.
Discussed. Mr. Philippon, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you.
Boy, we didn't dip our hands on that one, though.
And we are, we're going, either number three, uh, Mr. Mariney, we're, we're going to table Lopez v. Ansonia.
No.
Is that right? No action, okay, no action.
What?
Okay.
Back to public session, public official session.
Ms. O'Malley, anything you say tonight?
The Mayor announced the grant.
Happy New Year.
Getting, we're sending out the bids for Pringle and Pulaski, and we're, um, also, we started our study for Ansonia cut from brass. Um, a lot going on, but I'm going to defer to that next time, I'll be twice as long next time.
Oh, please. Great job getting all the lights on, wait.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that was, uh, the decision was to proceed with everything on, with shields, so, you know, calling to the constituents.
Looks good, I haven't had no complaints, so we're good.
And we are turning the over, the soup, the lights that are above that row should be turned off entirely, the overhead lights.
The overhead lights are going to be turned off, probably taken out as well.
Thank you.
Greg Martin is not, Greg Martin's not here tonight, so, Rich Bishar, please, anything you add?
Oh, so they double, play double.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you. I've only, I've got it down about twenty-five minutes. All these years, I've never seen public official session cut in three pieces. So, one, of course, the biggest, um, Pleasant Street, the first, second, or, or is more that is, we've got a request to look at the parking, winter parking situation over there, Commissioner and I were discussing that earlier. From time to time, we have to make adjustments on, on the winter parking, as we go through, and make sure they still make sense, so. Uh, secondly, I, I was, uh, contemplating before whether this would be my last meeting, and I can tell you this, but this will be my last meeting. As much as I miss a PowerPoint from Sheila O'Malley, um, I'll try to catch a video of that. I've been coming to these, I think Trish is the only one in the room that's gone to more automatic meetings than I have in eighteen years in this, in this seat. I've enjoyed, uh, well, I've enjoyed all the meetings, just some more than others, I guess is how I'll put it, um, but I just want to thank everybody for your support already, because I think about all the people that serve here now in these seats and who have served here in the past, um, all the work that we've done, I want to thank America for its very kind words, and Sheila and John for all your, your help over the past five years. I think what I'll miss, miss the most, of course, is the, of course, I always miss these meetings, but what I'll miss the most is all these personal relationships, you know, get to work with people, and what, no matter your party, never mattered to me, you're Democrat or Republican, I'm affiliated, and try to work with everybody, because everybody has to thank you, so, uh, you know, that's the, that's the hardest part of it, is, um, look at, like, Jared Ian has worked with, uh, side-by-side for years, Mick Delasio, known each other since Nolan School, nineteen sixty-seven, Mike Eamon, Sean, you know, of course, Paul, so, uh, I just want to thank everybody, you know, there's a, I guess I kind of shocked people over there, it's kind of all, uh, it's sort of by design, uh, sometimes you've got to rip the, you've got to rip the damn thing off, you know, privately. Department's going to be in great hands, Lieutenant Carter's taking over on the sixteenth, and we all know him, sharp, smart guy, integrity, loaded with integrity, honesty's a day as long, so it's going to be in great hands, and there's going to be a process in place, and my hope is that it just, it just continues right through, I know he's going to shine, uh, I have no doubt in that, I've been working on the transition with him, but it's been pretty easy, because we've been, he and I have been side-by-side, we became sergeants together in nineteen ninety-five, so we've been side-by-side for a long, long time, and I know he's capable, and so it's, it's going to be a solid job, so, uh, and just thanking you guys, it's all, you get in these positions, and, and I, people think, "Oh, they have all this authority and everything," but what you have to go through to get these chairs, and to rent these chairs, and to keep these chairs, you volunteer for this, and it's a thankless job, and you've seen that again tonight, you'll see it again next month at all the meetings in between, and, uh, so I just want to thank you, a lot of people don't recognize that, but I've always recognized that, the Boards and Committees and Commissioners have volunteered time, and again, thank this special belligerent, it's really a thankless issue, so, um, I'd love to say that that probably wouldn't be entirely true, so, thanks everybody, I appreciate all your, our, our, our.
Actually, I have one serious question, um, we just were hoping that this, your decision was not influenced by certain former First Ward Alderman insisting on ride-arounds all the time? It wasn't.
Where's the defender, so?
That's, that's why I asked.
No, a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of, a lot of things went into this decision, it wasn't all right, but I, I surprised everybody, but a lot went into this.
Yeah, and, and I just want to say that you can come back every month at the same time, and you can, you can come up to the podium.
I'm going to, I'm going to do that.
Chief, you have, you have a clear, perfect record of attendance, and I would, I would point out to you that the sixteenth is past the next Board of Alderman meeting, so I would, I would suggest that in order to keep that record going-
You want to see it, yeah. Email me the PowerPoint.
All right, well, the best.
The Mayor grew up on a playground with him, and grew up on a playground with him.
Okay, let's, grow up on a playground right here.
Mr. Delasio? Director of Public Works?
Good evening, ladies.
Being judged on gravity.
We can sell free, so we can earn our own.
Yes, yes.
I don't want to get out of ourselves.
Please, we can email us.
I could do that, too. Not much to report, the guys have been out washing and waxing trucks this past week in the most cold, thank God, so I got the guys washing and waxing trucks, picking up Christmas trees, leaves, you know, starting to take a non-Christmas decorations place throughout the city, because it's, it's letting you know. We'll start grinding like trees next week, and brush tape on the score a little bit, probably going to have about seven, eight hundred trees by the end of next week, so we'll grind them up, use them as mulch, so I'll save the disposal cost. Oh, we got a new truck and payloader came in this month, truck's beautiful, good, payloader still in the garage, I'm trying to keep it clean, but, uh, well, I'm here today also to ask the Alderman, we have our old payloader, we have no room left, we've got all these trucks, two new trucks, new payloader, and we're short kind of, we're short money, so I figured it'd be a good time to maybe sell this, we've got some prices on it, so I could put the new payloader in that place, trace some revenue into the city, I sold some junk equipment and stuff, picked up fifteen grand for scrap equipment that we had laying around, we got some bids on the machine, they were going to give us twenty-seven thousand in the trade, and we got two other bids, the highest bid was thirty-three thousand. It's a good price, we don't need the machine, we can put in the general plant, um, Trish is looking at the kind of money, I'm trying to put some money back, I might need it for overtime, maybe this year, so, thirty-three at fifteen, yeah, so, fifty-one, we can use it.
Don't we were keeping the old folks?
Yeah, I don't know, we have no room for it now, we need, we're short money, we said last night, oh, we were short some money, so I figured-
I don't wish any snow, but if you had a decent snowstorm, and then had that for sale the next week, you'd make good money on it. You'd make, make out anyway, you're still winner.
Even right now, with, at this number- Even right now, with, at this number, it's, it's...
It's a good price.
That's a good price, yeah.
Thirty-three thousand, we, we paid 150 for the new one, this is 10 years old.
Yeah, they do.
Get to the point now that, I mean, it's, we can use it? Some, sometimes. Like I said, we have no money for it.
Not the space, you know, it's one of the main discuss on it, yeah.
We got some bids on it.
You went out to bid?
Yeah, I got 300 bids.
We put it in the paper, you went out to bid?
I, yeah, it wasn't in the paper, it went out for bids, um, we received the last bids, there, some different contractors, bidding on the paper, we're just out there, a bunch of people bid on it. Actually, we, our new machine, they bid on it, and I said it was not enough money, so they had some people call me, some other people called with the bid, had some paper bids nowadays. Yeah, we could do, if we could go out to bid in the paper, try it that way through.
If anybody's got more than 33,000, they could come in and buy it.
Yeah, I could, I could put it in the paper.
Yeah, I, I think that we should, um, throw it in there, because, you know, we don't wanna look like...
Technically, yeah.
Favor, yeah.
Okay. So we'll put it in the paper, do some more bids.
Yeah.
Find some more spare paper up in, uh, Buick Montana or something.
I'll publicize, put it in the paper, put it in the description, hopefully by next month we'll have some different numbers, and I'll put it up to the board.
Mr. Mr. Shure, do you want to...
No, no, I think the charter says we have to do that, if we could trade it in, but I think if we're gonna sell something, yeah.
It's always a hassle.
Got advertised.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
I mean, it's crazy.
No, no, but it's gotta be.
I would figure we were getting 5,000 more if we were just in the trade, but we'll put it in the paper, and you never know, maybe we can get more that way.
Whatever way the charter says to do it, just...
We'll do it that way. We'll publicize and put it out there, hopefully by next month we'll have a better number. And, uh, we got our new machine, as I said, we'll just put it...
Put it on the edge of Viggen Street there before sales on.
We'll take pictures and put it in the paper, and, uh, this will be good, I guess I'll put it.
Yeah.
Play a helpless...
Yeah, it's just gotta go.
But we're gonna, it might be short, we'll do it here and there, all the time, you know.
Any other questions?
None.
Just to comment, just...
Mike, thanks for everything you did on Wakeley. I know you and your guys are out there running. I know, Mike, you slept out there with the really bright lights, thank you, guys.
We're keeping you awake, huh, Mike?
Uh, yeah. They were a little bright, yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Committee reports, finance committees, their motion to pay all bills are found to be correct. Mr. Castleitis, second by Mr. Rivers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public Works Committee, nothing to report tonight, Mr. Stowe?
No. Thank you.
Right hand, thank you. Arms Committee, Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, uh, for the month of December 2018, Arms responded to 246 calls for service. Out of the 246, 150 fire transport ordered. Griffin Hospitals received most of those transports at 118, followed by Yale Woodhaven Hospital at 21, Bridgeport Hospital four, St. V's four, Yale Children's six, and Yale St. Ray Campus two. Um, the final revenue for the month was not ready as of January 7th, 2019, so I'll take that at the next meeting. And before I go any further, I would just like to defer to Chief Hearn right now. As everybody knows, there's been a lot of issues with mold and stuff in the building, and it's been under construction. Um, I'm just looking for him to give an update to the boards or everybody's on the same page.
Chief.
Good evening. Just to let everyone know, I've been managing the insurance claim and everything with the building. We are finishing back Friday, all the mechanical replacements in the building, and then starting next week, the restoration of the building, uh, if you put the ceilings back in and everything like that, we'll be taking place. So, uh, we're at about $280,000, uh, in the insurance claim so far, that we've gotten approved and reversed for the building. Um, no fault of any of ours, and just poor, uh, design, maybe able to, uh, building up the building. Um, we did go to vote, because we do have a couple of, um, unanticipated expenses that come with this, relative to electrical work, that, um, drop ceilings have to be done, and parts and floor, I mean, that needs to be replaced. Um, it's my understanding, because their meeting, they used to be at a third one day, and they moved their meetings to the first, it was the same exact time as our meeting, so I wasn't able to be here last night. Uh, they cabled our requests, so it's gonna keep us out of the building for a while, because they cabled our requests. So, we have moved forward, and they have removed stuff like that. My hope is that I can get the insurance company to cover that, but I was hoping to get the money funded in there, in case they don't cover it, we can get it done, and move forward and get it approved. So I'm hoping that next month we can get it approved, because it's a priority for the board to decide. Um, but that's pretty much the story of the building. While we're under this report, just to let you know, Richie and I, the mayor, have executed all the contracts, we have all the system, and, um, and set up some services and stuff tomorrow, and that. Uh, so that's also in the process, a lot of little pieces. Um, I also have our annual report completed with Arms, and, uh, we did, uh, do about 200 more calls last year than we did before, and, uh, call statistics and stuff like that, so it's a busy year again. So, uh, we can report from that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Hearn?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Um, I really need a little bit of community reading. I came back in July, asking for an ordinance review, I think they'll, you know, the, the state sent the mayor another email, we have gotten this, uh, we're delinquent, and they're, they just sent the mayor another email this week. So if we can get another...
Yeah, we'll get one this month.
...be used, definitely, Richie, I think. Thank you.
WPCA, Mr. Stowe, anything to report tonight?
That doesn't need to be reported until next month.
Thank you. Fire Committee, Mr. Schuer.
Yep. Uh, briefly, I'll give you the sheet after, so you can get all the detail. Uh, department activity for the month of December, 38 total calls, uh, highlights, 11 motor vehicle assists, seven cooking fires, uh, three, uh, natural propane gas leaks, uh, three electrical hazards, and three water leaks, and three fire martial investigations on top of that. And, uh, finally, in a beautiful ceremony this weekend, uh, our own, uh, Mike Eamon was sworn as, as our new fire chief. Um, and you probably read online that he made history as the first person in Ansonia, uh, their history, uh, to have served two, uh, terms as, as the fire chief, so, congrats to him. If you're unfamiliar with, if you're unfamiliar with how that works, you basically go through the chain for 10 years to get to that, so he's already committed to another 10 years down the road, right?
Well, I ask you, this will be, when I finish, it'll be 20 years of chief.
Uh, and finally, thanks to, uh, Adam, Adam Askey, uh, for his past services, uh, chief for the past few years, and that's it.
Thank you. Ordnance Committee, nothing to report. Any report? Housing Committee, Mr. Cesset.
Yes, uh, the Housing Authority has completed installing, uh, surveillance cameras at the, uh, Mont Senior Hayes complex, that's on 70 Wood Lawn. Uh, the estimates for new windows and vinyl siding are out for bid for the scattered site property that's over at 11 May Street. Uh, the flooring at the Ortoli Community Center has been replaced, and the center was freshly painted. They also had a holiday luncheon, which was, uh, very nice, on the 20th of December. Um, all the, uh, residents participated in that. And the, um, Housing Authority architect is preparing the specs for the outdoor venting, uh, the range hoods, and, uh, and that'd be at the Mont Senior Hayes Apartments. That's it.
Quick question. Did you say they're doing the roof on 11 May Street?
They are doing the siding and the windows, no roof.
Side again, windows, alright.
No, no.
Okay. Municipal reports, or any of the committees to report? Sorry, Mr. Philippon.
Uh, salaries has two resolutions, one regarding Public Works, and then, uh, one regarding the Ansonia, uh, Ansonia Rescue Medical Services, so.
Thank you. Municipal reports, Board of Affairs and Taxation, recommendations, is there a motion to approve the, uh, motions, uh, 1 through 4A and 4B? Mr. Castleitis? Mr. Rivers second, any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Land Use Department?
17 bike complaints, 23 inspections, investigations, total revenue 11,018 in December.
Thank you. Mr. Castleitis?
Motion to accept the tax collectors' report request for refunds in the amount of $8,859.29, found to be correct.
Thank you, sir, second. Mr. Yaman, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, there are no accidents and claims. Uh, communication, number one, the annual city audit, I think we covered that, unless anyone has anything to say, anyone?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers, appreciate that. Uh, resolutions, we're gonna table, resolution number one, Economic Development Director from Sheila O'Malley regarding...
I'd like to remove that.
Remove it?
Yeah.
Okay, removed. Need a motion to remove that?
Motion to remove.
Second. Mr. Rivers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Remove. Salary resolution.
Uh, so the first one for the Public Works, the proposed calls for a $3 increase, uh, retroactive 7/118, um, and the $1 per hour increase on the increments here on the, I'm not sure if you looked at that one. But, um, what this is gonna do, is gonna put the foreman 10% higher than the highest paid union worker superintendent, at a rate 10% higher than the foreman. Um, and then this is in exchange for the medical insurances that they always, that they already have, which will be future savings to the city of $1,000,000 for a person per year.
Motion approved. Mr. Rivers, second. Discussion, gentlemen? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, guys.
Next one's for Arms, um, regarding chief and salary increase.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on that.
Motion to approve is written?
Yes.
Mr. Schuer, second. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Rivers and Schuer.
Amendment to Public Works...
Management contract.
Management contract?
Oh.
Uh, it is hereby resolved that the terms and conditions of employment for Public Works management personnel be amended as follows. Retirement be medical insurance. Old language, the city shall provide and pay for costs of individual coverage under the current plan for retired superintendent or foreman and spouse from the date of retirement. In addition, the city hall, the city shall continue major medical coverage for the retiree and spouse. Proposed language, the city shall pay for the following medical benefits for retirees. Superintendents and foremen hired after January 4th, 2019. For non-medical eligible superintendents or foremen hired after January 4th, 2019, 80% of the cost of the medical plan coverage provided to the retiree at the time of retirement, and 20% of the cost for the retiree's spousal dependent from the date of retirement until said retiree or spousal dependent becomes eligible for Medicare. But for a period not to exceed 10 years, for retirees, and five years for spousal dependents. Additionally, when a superintendent or former retires under a high deductible health plan, the city of Ansonia shall retain the option to provide an HSA or an HRA to the retiree and spousal dependent upon the date of retirement. At such time that any superintendents or foreman hired after Jan- January 4th, 2019, or their spousal dependent becomes eligible for Medicare, the city shall pay for Medicare supplement insurance coverage for the retiree only for a period not to exceed 10 years. Two, superintendents and former hired prior to January 4th, 2019. For non-Medicare eligible superintendents or former hired prior to January 4th, 2019, the city shall provide and pay for the cost of individual coverage under the current plan for the retiree and spousal dependent from the date of retirement until the date of said retiree or spousal dependent becomes eligible for Medicare. Additionally, when a su- where a superintendent or former retires under a high deductible health plan, the city of Ansonia, Ansonia shall retain the option to provide an HSA or HRA to the retiree and spousal dependent upon the date of retirement. At such time that any superintendents or former hired prior to January 4th, 2019, or their spouse becomes eligible for Medicare, the city shall pay for Medicare supplement insurance coverage for the retiree and his or her spousal dependent. For the purposes of this section, medical plan coverage includes medical, dental, and vision coverage. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Mr. Castleitis and Mr. Rivers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, Mr. President, I just wanna interject really quick, because it is significant, um, the agreement here does end, um, the practice of city-funded insurance for life, which had been in other contracts in the past, had remained here in this Public Works Management contract, and with this, uh, agreement, and really credit not only to the board, but of course, the members who had to accept, um, that this, uh, this exchange, it is ended now citywide, uh, there is no more city-funded insurance for life. So I, I think really deserve a round of applause for, for coming together, working with the city.
Resignations, we have a resignation letter from Darnley through 60 Liberty Street.
We've got the late, late resolution.
Uh, we're not, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, pass the late resolution. Motion to table a late resolution?
Yeah.
Mr. Philippon?
Yes.
Mr. Rivers, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dear Mayor Cassetti, I wanted to personally inform you that I will be resigning from the Board of Elderly Commission. I have recently been presented with a job offer that will help me reach my career goals, and I accept it. The hours of new job would conflict with my volunteering service. I am grateful for the wonderful experience I have, I have volunteering at the Ansonia Senior Center slash Board of Elderly Commission. This letter will take effect 12/10/2018. Thank you, Darnley. There are, motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Mr. Yaman?
Send the letter, thank you.
Mr. Rivers, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Appointments, amended list of appointments, uh, for the Board of Library, a three-year term. Robert Gary, Republican, for Pleasant View, Ansonia, Connecticut, term expires 12/30/21.
Question to first.
Mr. Castleitis, motion to approve. Mr. Yaman, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commission for Elderly Services, a three-year term. We have two appointees, Joan Lawler, Democrat, 45 Northwestwood, Westwood Road, and Diane Stroman, Democrat, 66 High Street, Ansonia.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Castleitis, motion to approve, and Mr. King, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you, gentlemen. Conservation Commission is a four-year term. We have three appointees, John Jones, Democrat, ninety-two Ford Street, Michelle Libby, Republican, two fifty-six North State Street, and William Gibson, Democrat, fourteen Arbor Terrace. Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Castleitis? Mr. Schuer, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Which one?
This one. I'm to read.
Okay. One abstention. Inland Wetlands, William Alrba, unaffiliated, one forty-five Myrtle Avenue, Ansonia. Emergency Management Director, I'm sorry, Jared Hearn, how could I forget? Republican, Ten Kylie Lane, Ansonia, replacement for Kevin Hale, Chief Kevin Hale.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Castleitis and Mr. Schuer, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Mr. Schuer. Inland Wetlands Commission, William Alrba, unaffiliated, one forty-five Myrtle Avenue, Ansonia, term to expire twelve, thirty, twenty, reappointment.
Motion to accept.
Mr. Yaman and Mr. Cassetti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Water Pollution Control Authority, three-year term, Domenico Philphone, Republican, fifty-six Mott Street, term expiring on one thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, replacing, Mr. Terschman.
Make a motion, second.
Mr. Rivers and Mr. Castleitis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Enjoy, right?
One abstention?
What you saying? It's time to adjourn, is that what you said?
Yeah, I guess. Almost over there, too.
No, I'm over there, too, you know.
New business.
I know. Oh, man, it's probably the case.
Yeah, I'm over there, too.
No, new business, okay. I guess, secretaries, we doing this?
Wherever you did the.
You know, just a point I wanted to bring up, but I, I only, I only say this because there's been a couple of committees that have been, or boards that have been meeting and are saying, you know, it's really essential that they need someone there to record, and they can't get anybody, and they won't go because they can't get paid, so people won't do this, just on a volunteer basis. So, perhaps if there's a couple of committees that we could reconsider, I don't know.
They won't get, they don't get paid, or they just don't like to get?
Well, we eliminated the secretarial position. I know you guys put a lot of time and effort into that, thank you for that, but they, you guys eliminated some of the secretarial.
Okay, but.
Positions.
You can't take your own minute? But, you know, why we actually did that is because people were going in for like these five-minute meetings before the meeting, and getting paid for that, and then getting paid again.
And that's it, three or four hours.
I know.
Like her, right?
Remember, sometimes members of a public commission can't actually take minutes.
No, no, no.
But they don't, but they don't.
They got two dollars an hour.
I need to.
The only thing they should take is a lot of minutes.
Yeah, it's just a motion, right, but we don't.
They need to be looked at each one, if they want to come and apply.
To clarify here, if a commission, if a commission, or board of any public group meets, minutes are required, but all that's required is a documentation of the actions taken. So, if there's no secretary available, a member of the commission can simply record who is present, what motions take place, who votes against, who votes for, who abstains, and it's as simple as that. That gets filed in the clerk's office, that complies with FOI law. There really isn't, there's no requirement to write a novel on these meetings, it just has to be short and simple.
And according to Robert's rules, the chairman of that committee can designate someone to take minutes.
Of course.
Okay.
Can we take a listen while we're auditioning?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm asking.
Mr. Philphone? Mr. Schuer? Motion to, all in favor, aye. We'll need to adjourn. One to one, Shepherd, say aye.